Well, something I think all of council has been looking forward to. I want to welcome our guests, chairperson and spokesperson for the Public Safety Committee, David Reed, sort of our council groupie and a member of that committee, David Stockton. Thank both of you for being here, and I think we look forward to this presentation from Commander Hall, or Chief Hall, and I know that I've heard fantastic things. David and I have been able to talk about what was going on, not details of the committee, but he said, hey, this is something you council really, really needs to see. So, roll the film.
All right. So, I guess just to start off, I really appreciate being allowed to present in front of council today. Matt and I and Tim really were challenged with how to fit what we presented to the Public Safety Committee in about 30 minutes of time here. And so, we're going to go through this PowerPoint. It's a direct reflection of the over 90 slide PowerPoint, one of them that we presented to the committee. And so, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, and then I think David has about 30 minutes or so to, that he wants to present, and he's giving me a look. I may have more time to present.
Take an hour.
And I do think that looking at what we have to talk about after your presentation, you have some extra time.
Okay, awesome. Well, that makes me feel a little bit better, especially if council has questions, because I really want to make sure that those questions are answered today.
Chief?
Yes.
Is this the same as what was in the packet?
Yes. So, the next thing that I want to go over is that just because of PowerPoint and formatting, the screens, when we put, the presentation that you have here in your packet, okay? The presentation that's on the screen is the same. The only difference is it's just blown up a little bit more, so that everyone in the audience can see it, because when we presented to our department, we used the one that's in your packet, and it was, it was just so hard to see on the screens. And we did make some extra copies, and it looks like you may have an extra copy. So, if you're not using your computer, then the copy you have is the more blown up version. And then, right underneath that, you have the report. So, the only difference here up on the screen is that because there were two slides, that there was so much information contained, we just had to continue and split them out. We'll talk about that. You have the same presentation. So, with that, of course, Commander Cox could be here today, but Matt and I will do the best we can to go over it. We're going to talk about organizational staffing, where we're at, and then, of course, where we'd like to be for the future. We're going to discuss our crime statistics. We have a lot more than what's presented here in the PowerPoint that we showed the Public Safety Committee, but we tried to bring out some of the high points as far as what's affecting our community currently. And then, we have some comparisons to some other communities in Colorado, too, that we have here in the PowerPoint. We did some more comparisons with other communities, and we'll talk about that. We'll talk about just a very high-level briefing on what intelligence-led policing is. I think all of you have heard me discuss intelligence-led policing. I told our department and our staff here last week that they're going to get very sick of me talking about ILP, and that's the direction we're going for the future. And then, obviously, the future. We'll talk about staffing levels, the potential to need a new building, or that we do need a new building, and, of course, costs, and how much all of that potentially would cost. All right, so, we'll go on to the next slide, and this is our current organizational staffing, if we were staffed at full capacity. Matt has some numbers as far as where we're at with trainees and hiring and things like that, and we can, of course, answer those questions. Right now, and this is really important to remember, we have 27 patrol officers at full staff that are responding to calls for service, and six patrol sergeants, okay? And the numbers that, and the stats that you'll see moving forward with some of our graphs, you just need to keep in mind that detectives are not the first responders to these calls. The chief of police is not. The commanders are not. The drug task force is not. And so, the first person that touches, it may be a drug crime, it may be something that eventually detectives will touch, a felony assault, for example. But they are not the first responders that initially go out, contact the victim, do the initial follow-up to that call. So, between patrol sergeants, because they do also take calls for service, and patrol officers, we have 33 responders that respond to all the calls that we have in the city. Of course, we also have a crime-free officer. That is our, really, we like to look at that as our community policing officer, although we are all responsible for community policing. We have two school resource officers. One is full-time at Montrose High School. The other is, shares responsibility between both middle schools, also Vista, and then, both of the school resource officers split the elementary schools. We have a detective sergeant and three detectives. Those detectives take primarily sexual assaults. That's what they investigate, and then, serious felony assaults. We have a drug task force sergeant and one drug task force officer, and that is combined with the Montrose County Sheriff's Office, who also contributes to drug task force officers from their agency. And then, continuing, we've got non-squirm positions. And those non-squirm positions include code enforcement officer, an evidence technician, victim services coordinator. We have a records supervisor, and then, we have five records techs, a records radio tech, also handles all of our arbitrators or in-car cameras, things like that. And then, we have one records tech that also is assigned full-time at the drug task force. And then, we have an animal control division. Obviously, Mike Duncan, our director of animal services. Keri Kishiyama is our animal shelter manager. And then, we have a full-time customer service tech and four part-time. And then, we have our responsibilities between those two divisions, and I put this slide in here to show how much both of our commanders are really responsible for. Tim Cox has our patrol division, our crime-free division, and our animal control section, but he has, as a result of that, eight direct reports. Matt Smith may not have as many direct reports from one specific division, but he has several divisions that he supervises, and I believe you have also eight direct reports. That's detectives, records, school resource, drug task force, code enforcement, victim services, and evidence. So, his time is split between all of those different positions. So, we'll move right on into crime stats. Please stop me if you have any questions. We're going to start with assaults. And as you can see, assaults have certainly increased from 2010 until 2018. We really saw an uptick in assaults, starting in 2017, and right now, our numbers show that we're about 270, or two and three-quarters more in assaults than we were in 2010, 275%. So, of the total number of assaults reported last year, of 341 assaults, we made 205 arrests. And that, as you, as you will notice, as we go through some of these stats, the red is arrests, the blue is number of reports. And as you see, or as those numbers or those two trend lines, there's more distance between the two trend lines, that's our clearance rates, okay? So, in other words, report versus solve it, you make an arrest. We would really like to see, you know, those trend lines following each other fairly closely in a lack of distance, okay? Because when you have distance between those two trend lines, that means we're not necessarily solving those cases, okay?
So, those people got away, or you never caught them, didn't identify who they were?
Sure. All of the above.
Correct.
Yeah, all of the above.
Would that include a report that you decided wasn't valid?
Absolutely. That also is part of that. One of the things that the scientific evidence shows from intelligence-led policing, from the course that we took, is that in any given community, there's about 30% of crime that is not reported, whether that's sex crimes, or assaults, or drugs, or whatever it may be. So, you can look at those numbers and then kind of do those in your head, and the main thing I wanted to show you today is that those numbers are increasing. Of course, assaults are something that we take very seriously, and for a felony assault, or a sexual assault, those usually take anywhere from 40 to 60 hours for one person to investigate. So, start thinking about those kinds of things.
So, Chief?
Yes.
If they're not even reported, then it doesn't show up in that blue number, right?
Correct. Yeah. So, moving on to domestic violence, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to explain what happened in 2017 for us to have a lower number, but I honestly don't know. We, in 2010, we had about 218 reports, and we're now, as far as 2000, excuse me, 2010, we had 218. In 2018, we're up to 334 reports of domestic violence within the city. Domestic violence calls, as you all know, can be very dangerous for our patrol officers. That was the type of call that we lost Sergeant Kinnerknecht to, and we had two other officers that were wounded in that incident. 334, and we made 203 arrests last year. Because they are so volatile and dangerous, we don't roll on those calls with just one, potentially two. Sometimes, we'll roll even three or four, especially, I know this is hard to believe, but they're oftentimes repeat offenders.
That was my next question. This represents 334 unique events, but is represent, it'd be interesting just to know how many, how many unique individuals, or?
Sure. No, how many repeat offenders contributed to an overall stat of 334?
If there's 334, was that 332 people, or was it 150?
Right.
I'm sure you've got more data than you can share, but?
Um, yeah, I wouldn't have that data immediately. It would probably take, I don't know if our record system, it might require a hand search, so.
But, but you can just anecdotally say that with all of these crime statistics, they don't represent 334 unique individuals, or 341 unique individuals, that oftentimes, some of the same people are repeating.
Yes.
With respect to the domestic violence, too, I think it's important to keep in mind that there are numbers out there that suggest it takes a victim sometimes 11 times to actually be victim of that domestic violence prior to making a report. That's not a solid number. So, repeat offenders, yes. Potentially, repeat offenders that we don't even know about, but also, the case that you're asking about, repeat offenders who we have talked to before about the same kind of?
So, for instance, over the weekend, we have an individual who we've arrested for committing about eight grand in damage to Subaru. He was arrested for first-degree arson, for setting fire to his home here, well, probably about a month ago. Back probably 12 or 13 years ago, he firebombed one of our patrol sergeant's vehicles, personal vehicles, set fire to it, and just this weekend, we were chasing him, because he has a warrant for his arrest, for all the things that he failed to appear on, for all the crimes that we previously charged him with, and he was able to make bond on all of those crimes. We could get into a whole discussion on bond and the way Colorado was going with lowering those bonds and things like that, but repeat offenders are absolutely one of the issues that we face, and that's why ILP is very important, because it focuses on the top 6% of your repeat offenders. Because we believe, and I'm kind of jumping forward a little bit, if you address the top 6%, because the science shows it, in your community that are causing crime issues, you actually can make a 30% overall reduction in your crime rate. So, and I'll, I'm getting excited, but I'll talk about that.
So, do these kinds of crimes, do they appear before a district judge and not our municipal judge?
It depends, okay? So, our municipal court takes, sees things like our disorderly conducts, of course, traffic is a big one, juvenile offenses is a big one, okay? Then you move into crimes like third-degree assault, domestic violence. So, that's not a felony crime, but it's not something that our municipal court has jurisdiction over, because they're not a court of record. So, they go into county court. So, that's like Judge Ben Morris sees those cases. Andrew Boyko prosecutes those cases. Then you see crimes like sex assaults, felony assaults. We had attempted murder here four weeks ago. Those cases are seen by district court judges like Carrie Yoder, because she has jurisdiction over those cases, and prosecutors like Seth Ryan, Dan, Jason Wilson would be prosecuting that felony docket. So, all kind of different depending on the crime. Property crime. I wanted to show you this stat, because certainly, this was striking even for me when, when we ran this. You can see the numbers in property crime, but I want to show you the numbers that we're actually solving, and why do we think that is, or why do I think that is? And I'll show you here in just a minute. We would like to do better, honestly, on solving the property crime issues, but right now, our clearance rates on property crime, as you can see, 1,500 cases reported in 2018, and we made 436 arrests, okay?
Do you have a lot of repeat offenders in this situation?
I believe we do, and the reason I believe we do is because, honestly, property crime is a great feeder for your drug habit.
It's almost as if you're, the red line is capped, like your capacity to do it just is, like you're at the ceiling, because it's just been so consistent.
Yep. Here's the thing, and I'll show you in a minute, and you'll see, okay, now I know why we're not focusing as much time and effort as we can on property crime, because I'll show you your felony crime stats.
Can you give some, what is a property?
Sure. So, a property crime could be anything from felony embezzlement, where you have someone that's embezzled a couple hundred thousand dollars from a company, not to say we wouldn't obviously spend quite a bit more time on that, to something as simple as a shoplifting at Walmart, which we spent quite a bit of time down there, to something as someone broke into my house while I was on vacation, or broke into my shed and stole my lawnmower, all of those different kinds of things. The youth sports complex with the burglary up there and things like that, those are all examples of property crime. Thank you. What I want to show, though, is that, you're right, it does look like that's, those things are capped. And if you run some numbers in comparison to other communities in Colorado, we have a higher crime rate as far as property crime goes within the city of Montrose than other communities do. Okay, misdemeanor offenses. So, misdemeanors are your, what I kind of just explained, all right? So, that's your third-degree assault, domestic violence. That's, oh, theft. Help me out.
Protection order violation.
Protection order violation, potentially bond violation. That's anything that's not necessarily, you're hitting a municipal court for your traffic offenses or discons, but it's not the felony-level cases. So, as you can see, we have an upward trend. We're about 2,474 misdemeanor-reported offenses, and we've made about 1,300 arrests. That trend line is going up. It depends as far as person, persons' hours for investigating those cases. Sometimes, it doesn't take a lot. If it's a domestic violence or a domestic incident, a major theft, those crimes take a lot of hours. Here's the concern. This is why I believe, you know, adult, we're on adult felony crime. This is why I believe that we are having a difficult time keeping some of those other trend lines together as far as reports versus arrests, and that's because we've seen just a huge increase in the number of felonies that are reported to us on a daily basis. So, our felony crimes are second-degree assaults. Our felony crimes, at least as of today, are drug offenses. Our felony crimes are sexual assaults, sexual assaults against children, and our felony-level 724 felony offenses were reported in 2018. We made 272 arrests, felony arrests, and those are adults. You can add probably another 30 arrests to the red, the red trend line for juveniles. That is over two felony offenses a day reported to our police officers in the city of Montrose. When you, when you average it out, two a day, it takes us anywhere from 40 to 60 hours per offense to investigate these things, and these are our priorities. Our felonies are our priorities. That's when you have a victim in the hospital, a child who's been sexually assaulted, an individual who has been in, who has $200,000 embezzled from their company. And so, we're having to focus on these primarily, and so, we only have so many hours in the day, and as a result, our property crime and our misdemeanor offenses, we're not spending as much time on. This, this one slide here actually was staggering to me as well when we, when we ran these numbers, because honestly, I didn't even realize it was that, that high. In 2013, you can see where that started increasing. We can, we can discuss why that may or may not be the case, but that's where we really started seeing an increase in our, our adult felony crime. Moving on, sexual assaults. Sexual assaults, I'm sorry, are the, the primary number-one case, other than our occasional homicide, attempted homicide, major assault, serious bodily injury assault, that are detectives investigate. Keep in mind that one of these sexual assault cases usually takes around 60 hours to investigate. We have three detectives and one detective sergeant. And the detective sergeant does take cases, and he does take sexual assault cases, all right? But, here's the issue. Because you can imagine why these are our primary priority, they're investigating these types of cases. So, when we have a felony crime that doesn't amount to the level of a sexual assault, oftentimes, felony property, even potentially a second-degree assault against an individual, oftentimes, our patrol officers are investigating those cases also. And I was talking the other day to Barbara, when, when I first started, and I think it was two years, it was 1999, I remember one morning being called to a stabbing, okay? An individual had been stabbed in the arm. We never got stabbings, okay? So, we had four patrol officers, a corporal and three officers respond. We called out our entire detective division, which was, at the time, three detectives came out. We roped off the whole place. We took photographs, we put our tents out, we did all of those different kinds of things, because it was extremely important. It's still extremely important today, but the frequency of these crimes has increased, whereas stabbing today, initially, the response will be all hands on deck from a patrol capacity because of the medical issues, potential for, you know, violence to still occur, but that is sometimes entirely handled by a patrol officer, the initial crime scene investigation and things like that. A detective is notified, but our patrol officers have gotten so much experience now in investigating these things. I would put our patrolman against any major city patrol officer, and we've experienced this in the country, and hands down, they have tons more experience, because they've had to. So, just something to, to keep in mind, they're investigating major cases, which is pulling them away from doing other things, primarily being proactive. That's what we need, is proactivity and not reactivity.
So, the sex assault numbers, are they part of the previous adult felony numbers?
Yes, they are included in that.
So, these aren't all like separate?
No, they are not.
As far as the statistics?
All the sex assaults are, you know, we may have an, there may be an indecent exposure in there somewhere. We rarely get those, and those would not be a felony, that would be included in the misdemeanor side of things. But those are all mostly felonies, and those are the numbers of arrests.
Can you sort out, I'm just curious, about sexual assaults on children versus adults?
Yes, we could, if you want to see that.
Well, not necessarily, I just, it seems that's even sort of worse thing.
Well, I'll just throw it right out there. I would venture to say, and Matt, maybe you can talk a little bit about it, that we seem to have, of sexual assaults, our primary sexual assault report is sexual assault on a child.
We get an awful lot of referrals from the Department of Health and Human Services, because families work with them, and then often make disclosures that end up coming to us, because they're criminal in nature, and quite frequently, it's the child, and they disclose something in a forum or something like that, and then we end up getting involved with that. So, by and large, these are, well, I can't even say by and large.
Well, and they're, it's a multidisciplinary investigation. When I was in detectives, I would sit down with a child and I would interview them. That is absolutely the worst thing that you could do today. You have to be a trained interviewer and trained forensic interviewer in sexual assaults, because the last thing you want to do is re-traumatize the victim for the future. And so, you know, the Dolphin House is a fantastic resource for us, but it takes a lot of coordination to, to investigate one of these.
They're frequently very hard to investigate, because of a lot, a lot of times, the way the disclosure is made, it's cold, quote-unquote, in nature. There's not a lot of evidence. Cold meaning it happened in the past, so there's nothing that we can really hang our hat on, so that those other components of that investigation along the way become very, very crucial. The forensic interview, the Dolphin House, building a timeline, doing search warrants on houses, photographing everything, they're just really, really complex, and the way that you can investigate them in hopes of getting any kind of resolution as far as prosecution, they're tough. They're really tough.
And then, we haven't even talked about the prosecution. The amount of prep work for prosecuting these is immense, and?
By the police department?
Yes. Well, the police department.
I mean, by everybody, but specifically, it isn't as if you hand it over and you're done, is what you're saying.
No, absolutely not. No.
Usually, what happens is, you know, once that person is arrested and charged, of course, the defense bar becomes involved, and then, they start their process, then the district attorney side is like, you know what, I could see holes in A, B, and C, go out and do more follow-up. It's just this constant evolving thing that usually ends in either a jury trial or some type of a plea agreement. I do have to say that Dan's office in the realm of sexual assaults is doing an excellent job. They really are doing a good job. But, if you think about it, what's the priorities in our community, other than the occasional homicide? And Dan's office has had, I want to say, seven homicides last year. I mean, I, we had a briefing from the chief judge the other day, a record number of homicides in the septic judicial district. Other than homicides, your primary crime that you're going, you're going to expend most of your resources on is sex crimes.
And the judicial process, as we all know, is a multi-step thing. It doesn't just end, if I were to investigate a child sex assault and I wrapped up a very tightly-prepared case that was perfect, I hand it off to the district attorney's office, well, then the meetings start to see if I need to do that follow-up, and then I can be sure that a preliminary hearing is going to be coming down the pipe, and then I can also be sure that a suppression hearing is going to be coming along the pipe, even before we potentially get to a jury trial. All of those things take hours to prepare for with your attorney, so it's a team approach at that level as well, so more resource.
So, you guys then have to go to court and testify?
Yeah, and that, that almost goes without saying, so we show up for that, and that's, those aren't, these sex assaults aren't just a day trial, they, some- aren't, these sex assaults aren't just a day trial, they sometimes can last for a week, so you've dedicated an entire week depending on that case.
And then, keep in mind, it's just not the detective that's involved in that.
Yeah.
It's evidence, it's victim services, it's the patrol officer that initially took that case, it's all of that coordination, the Dolphin House, that all kind of circles together to make that a successful prosecution. It just takes time. Okay, moving on, if anyone has any other questions, we're going to get to drugs. Two primary drugs in the city of Montrose that we expend our resources investigating are methamphetamine and heroin. We do have the occasional cocaine incident pop up every now and again, but heroin and meth are our two primary offenses. In two thousand and eighteen, you can see how the trend line has gone up. We had twenty-nine arrests in heroin, or incidents of heroin. That may not seem like an awful lot, but what I want to express to you is that as of this weekend, because one of our patrol officers ended up making a warrant arrest and found five grams of heroin on an individual and about two grams of meth. Right now, we're sitting at thirty incidents of heroin today. So we met last year's numbers with half of the year this year. It's concerning because four grams of heroin, I don't know if you've seen the upcoming or the legislation that our governor signed, that has defelonized possession of heroin four grams or less and possession of methamphetamine four grams or less. If you have four grams of methamphetamine, according to one of our drug task force officers, that's about four to five uses for the average meth user in one day, okay? Heroin is different. You can't compare heroin and meth on the same level. Heroin is sold in units, not in grams like meth. Four grams of heroin is right around a hundred and twenty uses. Hundred and twenty uses, so...
And if I had that much, you can't arrest me?
Or a little bit less.
March of twenty twenty, that's true.
March of twenty twenty, that is, that was defelonized.
Are you suggesting that's enough for dealing?
Oh, absolutely, that's enough for dealing. In fact, I believe that probably our dealers are going to get smart really quick and only hold about four grams of heroin. And I also am here to tell you that I strongly believe you're going to see a major increase in this stat moving forward. We actually have, right now, in meth, we had a hundred and ninety-two arrests in meth last year, meth cases, so that's about one every day and a half or so. We've actually seen a little bit of a downturn in the trend. We're actually holding about, oh, I think sixty-eight meth arrests this year, so if you just double that, right now, it kind of looks like it might be a decrease in meth. I talked to, how do I word this? My understanding is that that's most likely due to the good work of our drug task force combined with DEA. And I really can't say anymore than that. However, I imagine, as you cut the head off of the snake, there's usually always one that pops in.
So should these be red? These are arrests?
These are arrests.
Yeah, and I apologize, these ended up being blue.
It's okay, I just wanted to be sure I understood.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Is fentanyl a separate category, or are we not seeing that, or?
We just got a briefing about that this morning from DEA. It is something that we're seeing, we're just not probably recognizing that we're seeing it yet. Because here's the thing, we can't test it. All of these things, we don't presumptively test anymore because it's so, the open air environment's so dangerous, one granule of fentanyl will stop your heart unless you've built up a tolerance like heroin. And so, are we seeing it? Potentially, but when we make a heroin arrest, we send that off to CBI. If you have five grams of heroin, right now, heroin is still a felony, so we're not going to expend the extra resources or, I'd expend the extra resources just as for fentanyl, when we already have the felony heroin. There's been some other information out there that we got briefed on this morning that there may be some counterfeit type looking fentanyl things out there as well. And so, once again, when we can't test it because it's so dangerous, I can't give you an accurate stat as far as that goes.
Are you, do you feel good that we're protecting our officers so that they don't get exposed to fentanyl? Part of my concern too is that somebody doesn't stumble upon it and we have a medical problem with the officer.
So we have, right now, we just got another sixty units of Narcan from the state, and we're, because we had a bit of a turnaround in the department, we have to train our officers on use of Narcan, so that's up and coming. The city last year budgeted for a fuming hood in evidence so that we, when we tested these things, it would basically suck it all up and we would breathe it in. Well, here's the thing, we got it right from CBI, don't test it.
Yeah.
So there was no reason at that point to purchase that fuming hood because we're not even going to risk testing it. Do I think that we're doing an adequate job as far as trying to protect our officers? Yeah. They've got Narcan, and they're not testing it. I don't know much more of what we can do.
Fentanyl has so many different meanings, and I remember particularly the governor Hickelup saying that he carries Narcan, that it takes no training. You have Narcan on you, you can jab it in the person that's crying. Is that correct?
Um, I don't, I don't know that that's correct. I know that we, as far as law enforcement, wanting to make sure that we're always protecting the city from liability, it's always good to have training that backs you up.
Okay.
Is it something where you can break the tab, swab it in someone's nose without training? Maybe, but we've always, we've always went down the safe side of having training.
There's another component to that, too. If you come across someone who might be overdosing or if someone gets exposed to something like that, it's hard to develop those fine motor skills, I think, and to desensitize yourself to a stressful situation in a way that allows you to act appropriately and administer through that thing correctly. So I think that training component helps with that as well, for us especially, because we don't quite know what we're going to show up to every single day. So I think that's an important part for us as well, for the training.
This weekend, we had a twenty-three-year-old person that we responded to for a medical event that was overdosing on heroin, and he was saved with Narcan. We've absolutely had overdoses in the community, deaths, and Dr. Canfield has certainly talked about those for heroin. Intelligence-led policing is going to become even more important as our state has defelonized these types of offenses because, as I think you defelonize, you will also see more of a brazen approach to possessing it, potentially dealing it, those kinds of things.
And just a note to Mr. Anderson's point, there's no red line to this, more so because of the nature of the crime. These don't get reported, per se. Like, we don't get a call about this. More often than not, what will happen is we contact someone or they're part of another crime to which we've already responded, and we come upon them in possession of meth, or we arrest them, and then we search them, and they have meth upon them. So it's not necessarily something that we receive a bunch of calls on. We go out practically, seek this kind of stuff, and we stumble upon it through the course of our normal duty.
I think.
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah.
Do these statistics on meth and heroin differentiate between possession and dealing?
No. No, they don't. We could certainly, you know, once again, we could get those statistics. This also doesn't quantify weight, so this could be, you know, a meth pipe with just a little bit of residue, or this could be five grams of heroin, which is a hundred and fifty doses. It's a stat. The combination between meth and heroin last year, you know, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty arrests between just those two drugs. So you think about it, that, once again, that's about one every other day. But associated with that is the repeat offender who's committing all the other crimes to feed this habit.
And are these, a hundred and ninety-two and twenty-nine, are those situations where it could be the same person repeatedly as well?
Yeah.
So there may not be a hundred and ninety-two people having meth today.
Exactly.
There's some number having it many times.
So these are not, these are not, these are unique offenses, but they do represent potentially repeat offenders. Last summer, we had our Pilot Street Crimes Program. Taylor Dynas went out, arrested a guy, had ten grams heroin on him, okay? It's a lot of heroin. All right? Put him in jail. He was out a day and a half later. Do you think that people spend time in prison anymore for just drug crimes alone? They don't. It's usually all the other associated crimes that may go along with that. Day and a half later, Taylor Dynas arrested him again with guess how much heroin? Ten grams of heroin. And he went back. And so, those are the offenders that we want to focus on because we believe those offenders are committing assaults, our sexual assaults, our burglaries, our property crime, our thefts. So...
How do you, go ahead. How do you keep them in jail for more than a day? I mean, you guys are doing your job, and then...
That's a good question, and I think that, once again, I think it's working closely with the district attorney's office. So I can tell you, we've had conversations with Dan, and Dan has asked us, when you have a high-profile offender, because right now, Andrew Boyko has a fifteen-hundred caseload document right now, has fifteen-hundred cases. Go ahead.
Even if you couldn't have any, even if the DA's office couldn't make any changes relative to their budget or their staffing, would more policing make this, I think the words you've used in the past, is a place these criminals don't want to live?
Excellent point.
Because I just don't think we ought to be throwing a lot of, let's say, money and time at a problem if, we can't control what a DA's office does. Can we still make a difference by putting more officers on the street?
Yes. Because it's not just about incarceration. In fact, I believe you can't arrest your way out of a problem, but I do think that you can disrupt, and that's what ILP has shown. ILP has shown that in other communities that are having the same issue. Because honestly, when you have the top six percent of your offenders that just can't get their work done because there's always an officer, a street crimes officer, a drug task force officer, someone that is right there disrupting their activities, let's face it, folks, they're going to go somewhere else to do what they need to do. That's what affects them.
You said you can't arrest yourself out of this problem, but you can create disruption which might move the problem away.
Right. And I don't think that you want to, you know, I think, I don't think you want to necessarily move your problem to another community.
Make it somebody else's problem.
Yeah, make it somebody else's problem. But the issue is, right now, you have Mesa County Sheriff's Office who are putting on more staff because now they have the funding. Grand Junction PD is putting on more staff because they have the funding. The Delta County Sheriff, in conjunction with the city of Delta, plans on going for a funding initiative in November because they see an issue, they're putting, put on more staff. And my concern is...
We're going to become the community that those...
The community of choice.
And I don't want to be that. And so, I think we have a plan, we just need to get there, but let me, we're at forty-two minutes here, so I'm...
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's good, these are all good questions.
What percentage of, let's say, the hundred and ninety-two meth were same time as a property arrest?
I don't know exactly, but I would have to tell you that because we're more reactive than proactive, most likely, we were called to this stat because of some reason. Now, our officers do love, especially when they have the focus to be able to do it, if they're unencumbered, to be proactive about it, but this was probably an in-progress verb. This was a domestic assault. This was maybe a traffic offense.
Probably not very often an isolated event.
Correct.
It was married to something else.
Right, it was married to something else. All right, I'll breeze through this one here fairly quickly, but I think it's important to note our resisting obstruction interference. This is basically when someone that we dealt with caused some type of violence towards us. I just want to show you the trend line. Trend line has increased significantly. So ninety-three instances where we had someone resist, obstruct, and this does not, this does not include the stat for second degree assault on a peace officer. So that's when someone actually causes us some type of bodily injury. I didn't have that stat to put in there today. This is an issue for us, and we have a plan to address it. Please ignore the graphic trend line. I am not trying to say, oh my God, we had twenty-seven to seventeen to eighteen, this huge increase. Actually, the increase in phone call, phone call requests was only about a little bit, about a hundred. So in twenty seventeen, we had three thousand one hundred and fifty-eight phone call requests. Twenty eighteen, three thousand two hundred and thirty-two phone call requests from citizens. Hey, I'd like to report this. Hey, I have a question about this law. Hey, my neighbor's dog is doing this, whatever the case may be, all right? That requires, keeping in mind those thirty-three, I call them blue suits, those first responders, to be at a phone, talking to that individual, taking that report. Now, that report may be pretty major, could be, I've been a victim of assault. It could also be, hey, I just have some questions about this law. Average time spent per phone call is about twenty-seven to twenty-eight minutes. Per phone call for an officer for three thousand two hundred and thirty-two phone calls last year.
So if these go beyond, if I call the police department, I'm going to get a CST or somebody's going to answer the phone? That's that, but then they're going to refer you to somebody else, and that's where this time comes in.
Yes, that's this time.
So that's maybe like a clearinghouse. I passed the clearinghouse with the CST, and so now it's a serious.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
No, but you bring up a good point because that's the direction we want to go. No. You call us and you say, I want to talk to a police officer, you're going to get to talk to a police officer. We do not have CSTs, so we don't have civilian report takers that triage that call, and because honestly, let's say, hey, I have a question about this law. We don't have anyone else that's going to answer that question other than a police officer. Hey, I'm a victim of assault. Well, it's going to go to a police officer, and it goes straight into our dispatch center. Our dispatch center dispatches it, phone call request. That's it, because they're moving on to the next one.
We're the clearinghouse, we're the screening, the guys that are actually on the street responding, so we don't have anybody else that can screen that call out as far as criminal law.
But the difference is, is we'd like to. Because the best practice for even agencies our size is that they have that screener, it's a civilian report taker. We shouldn't be spending the resources because police officers cost a lot of money. They should be on the street, being proactive. Yes, we want to be responsive to our citizens on our phone calls. It's just that initially, maybe a police officer is not the best person to take that initial report. initial report. It could be something as simple as, hey, last night my house got TP'd, something like that. Well, that's a civilian report taker. That's a found property, a lost property. Hey, I lost my wallet at City Market yesterday. I need a report.
So that, that's interesting to know. So that is all going through officers, and that is not best practice nor the best use of our money?
No. It is not. It's absolutely not. Honestly, we could hire a civilian report taker at much less cost to accomplish the same goal, freeing up whatever, I'm not going to say all of it, but freeing up a substantial amount of time so that honestly, that blue suit can be out on the street being more proactive.
That almost seems like a low-hanging fruit in terms of a change you could implement sooner rather than later and without regard to addressing the bigger picture.
We're working on it. Okay? So I'm going to breeze through this one here and then our total incidents. So computer-aided dispatch, that's our CAD activity log. All right? In 2018, we had 309,000 CAD touches. What I mean by that is whenever CAD is, when a police officer is on the scene of something, I need to run somebody. I've arrived on scene. We have this person in custody. I'm in contact with the victim. Okay? It's, it's one of the ways that we feel we could measure the complexity of our calls. Okay? Because as you can imagine, a traffic stop, they only take three calls, three times on the radio. Here's the license plate, I'm running the driver, I've cleared the call, maybe four times because you have to call out on traffic. Whereas a domestic incident or some type of felony case is going to take a lot of work, and therefore you're doing, you're, you're doing a lot of that through dispatch. Dispatch is running a lot of things. There's multiple officers on scene that are going on scene, clearing from the scene, doing other things. So as you can see, just within 2017 to 2018, we have had a fairly significant uptick in the complexity of our calls.
I want to make sure I understand what this is. This is every time a police officer in a car communicates back to dispatch. This is a touch.
It needs some... Yeah, this is a measurable amount of the work dispatch does as a result of what we're telling them.
Okay.
So...
This is a...
How much work a call takes to be completed?
I mean, in real layman's terms, is this every time a police officer goes, hey, hey, dispatch this?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep, 100%.
So moving on, that relates into our total incidents. And as you can see, that between 2010 and currently, we cleared last year 31,000 total incidents. So that's everything. That's the phone call requests, that's the traffic incidents, that's the traffic accidents, that's literally everything, whether it was proactive or reactive, that we've done. So, or 33, just remember, it's not the whole department, 33, um, police officers, and we have some animal control in there too, because police officers, although we do respond to animal control complaints on the weekends and at night when their animal control's not on duty, um, there's some animal control in there. 31,000 for 33.
So is my math right? It's 86 a day, 85 and a half?
Yeah, actually, we've ran that, and that's, that's pretty much right on point. 86, 86 incidents a day. We normally have our minimum staffing, we like to keep is four patrol officers on and at any given time.
And the interesting thing, these two slides combined, think of the work product, the CAD call touches, the speaking on the radio, 28,000 versus 31,000 may not seem like that big an increase for total calls, but bear in mind the complexity of those calls, the increase of that from 17 to 18 in conjunction with this amount. So you have 3,000 more calls, but they could be very, very complex calls, sex assaults, multi-officer, multi-party, domestic violence cases, property crimes, it'd take a, a, a very large time amount, or amount of time to investigate. So that's kind of what paints the picture about the increase in work that it's taken for us.
So, uh, next, we've got response times. This says a lot for me. Our, first of all, let me, let me, I guess, go back. International Association Chiefs of Police says that a best practice for any police agency or law enforcement agency is to have a four-to-seven-minute response time for priority one calls. Okay? So priority one call is a assault in progress, sex assault in progress, burglary in progress. It's something that, hey, I need a police officer here right now because my life is being threatened, my property is being threatened, although those are different in priority even within themselves. So as you can see, in 2010, I'm sorry, some of those numbers kind of got jumbled together, even through 12, 13, 4, 2014, the blue line is our priority one response time. Okay? Priority two is everything else. That's your phone call requests, that's your, uh, honestly, even your shoplifting at Walmart that can hold, all of those different calls for service. In 2018, we are more than double our priority one response times. And so that is a huge issue on average. Okay? And a little bit of an anecdotal story here, a week ago, I was woken up by a neighbor who obviously was having some type of disturbance at their house. Okay? And I called into dispatch, and I suspected I knew where it was. I told dispatch. Normally, our police officers don't call the victim or, excuse me, the reporting party and say, hey, I'm en route. This is what I've got going right now. But the officer, Andrew Spear, thought, ah, it's the chief of police, I'm going to give him a quick call and say, hey, chief, I'm en route. What he said is, is I'm clearing from the hospital, do you think, kind of know where it is? Sir, I'll be en route as soon as I can get there. Well, don't hang up the phone on me. I want to talk to you. I want to tell you where this thing is. And he wanted to get off the phone with me, and it was urgent, so he got off the phone. So I pulled up on my phone the app that shows all of our calls for service. They were dealing with four disturb, in-progress disturbances. I was the fourth one, and we had four on, and they were...
Simultaneous.
Simultaneous. So they were going to these disturbances. One ended up being a, uh, a felony assault, where an individual broke into his mom's home and with a weapon beat the head in of the boyfriend, and he's still up in, he's in critical condition at St. Mary's. So that goes right back to our priority one response times, because I called in a priority one call.
This, um, these numbers, we can safely compare to 2011 to 2017 in terms of the methodology of timing didn't change or anything.
Tell me, what do you mean by methodology?
Well, like, I mean, if, if at first we were only timing once the call got relayed to an officer, and, and starting in the last couple of years, we've started since the person made a phone call. Like, these are the, like, when we see this, we can conclude there really is a, this much of an increase in the response time, not that we changed how we calculated it.
Yes, no, that's a good point, and we, yes, that is correct. And if you look, because I too, you know, honestly, have that, that concern, or I want to make sure these stats are correct, if you go back to our total incidents, you go back to our felony crime increase, the trend lines, they all have the same trend line. I mean, they all kind of support each other. And so, you know, there are communities out there, I read a study from Denver PD, hired a consultant to essentially do what we did here, and I don't know if you saw a recent article, which I don't suggest we do, is that Denver PD is considering hiring civilians to respond to 911, 911 calls. But Denver PD actually didn't want to release to the community their response times because they were so egregious. So I appreciate, I appreciate you guys looking at these and, and being so transparent about it. So how do we compare to other communities? I'm going to move right through this slide here because we're going to just talk about it. So we have two communities. I had some others that we compared to, but these two really kind of match our, our community, communities to some degree. I think you can get into some dangers when you compare communities to communities, but we can talk about it. Durango PD, compare to Montrose. Durango has a population of 18 grand, we have 19 grand. Okay? Go to group A crime. So that's your, that's your serious property crime, that's your assaults, your sex assaults, things like that, all grouped into one. Per 100,000 residents, Montrose PD has 9,836 crimes. Durango has 7,994 of those crimes. Okay? Currently, Durango is running with about 56 police officers.
Let's just make it clear, that's per 100,000 population.
Yes.
There's not that many crimes.
Yes, to be very clear.
Let's just, let's just not hear the wrong number.
Absolutely. No, that's, that's a, that's a ratio per 100,000 residents. Okay? But this is from CBI's website. Okay? So you can get this data from CBI's website. Okay? As you can see, arrests, we're about 1,200 arrests, Durango's about 2,300 arrests. Okay? So they are, you know, doing a better job in some of those crimes than we are. Moving on, Grand Junction Police Department. I found this striking, but I want to be really clear to talk about our community also. We're, of course, at 9,800 per 100,000 residents. Grand Junction Police Department is at 10,929 incidents per 100,000 population. We are only 1,000 incidents off. Keep in mind something, though. I've seen some data that shows the City of Grand Junction and Mesa County are much more heavily weighted towards assaults and violent crime, and we are much more heavily weighted towards property crime numbers. So I'm not, what I'm trying to say is, we don't have the same type of assault rate, violent crime rate, that I think probably the City of Grand Junction has. Yes?
I, I was just going to suggest that, just so we can share and understand the data with the public, that if you did crimes per 10,000 and you just moved the decimal, it would make more sense.
Sure.
Because you talk about the number of crimes per 100,000, that both Durango and Montrose are one-fifth that size, I think it's really easy for people to, to look at that number and think that there are 9,000 crimes. And if you just did it, if you just changed it per 10,000 and moved the decimal, people might not make that mistake.
Sure, sure. Yep, no, that's, that's easily done.
And I get why you're doing that, because you're trying to show crime, you're, you're not just comparing the number of crimes in Montrose to the number of crimes in Durango or in Grand Junction, but as a, as a ratio to population. Just, I don't think, you see what I'm saying?
No, I see what you're saying.
Exactly. It is. And this is just a standard. This is our language, so that's probably...
You have to divide it by, we're 20% of that.
Yeah. No, that makes perfect sense.
Well, and this neighbors' data is the basis for, if you were to type on Google, you know, what's the crime rate in Montrose? This data, it's taken from here, it's also taken from UCR data, and at another time, if you have questions about UCR data, the FBI is no longer collecting UCR data, it's now this neighbors' data.
United crime rate?
United crime reporting.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, moving on, let's talk about detectives. Okay? They, they investigate the most serious of the crimes, and I think this is a good stat to show you all, and we showed the Public Safety Committee in the community. Grand Junction PD, this was 2014 stats. I don't have the current stats, but I don't believe that they've gone down. At 18 total, 18 investigators, 18 detectives for a population of 72,000. Mesa County, 11 investigators for a population of 37,000. Montrose SO, four investigators, and I think they currently have three, so they've gone down a little bit. At that time, their population was 15,000, so it did not include the City of Montrose, keeping in mind. And Delta Sheriff's Office at the time had four investigators for 3,300, and Delta PD too for 1,800. So we felt it was probably best to remove Delta SO and PD because that would skew the numbers. For population size, Junction, Mesa, and Montrose SO, you would need approximately one detective for every 3,700 residents. So as it stands right now, we have four detectives currently. We have one detective for every 6,219 residents. What that shows us here is that we really need to double our detective division and add another three. And if we add another three, our hope is that we can start sucking in some of those felony crimes that patrol is taking, i.e., making or allowing patrol to be more proactive instead of reactive in investigating those. So that's what that stat shows. Oh, I'm sorry, I did. Yeah, my, my mistake. I said resident, that's calls for service. So, not resident. Grand Junction, I think, has more than 72,000 residents. That is calls for service. Thank you. So the ratio is still the same, though. Per calls for service, one investigator per about 3,700. So let's get in really quick, just a quick slide on training and equipment. Right now, what we're facing as far as training and equipment, law enforcement, our role ever changes, and it seems that things become more and more expensive. For instance, our tasers, we just purchased 34 new tasers, and we had to do it over a, basically, a five-year time plan because we're trying to, trying to spread those costs out. We were about three generations behind because we just couldn't afford to get those up to speed. The nice thing is, is that Taser offered us a, a way that we could, we could do that. But our costs continue to increase. The technology, as far as what is expected of us to investigate, continues to increase. We had an, an incident, the first incident I'm aware of in Montrose, where we had a DDoS attack on one of our major institutions, not, not the city institution. A DDoS attack is where an individual takes a server or a multitude of servers down in a company by hiring a bunch of other servers around the world to send pings at the server to where the company server could, just can't handle the, the input, and it shuts it down. And it can cause a lot of financial and, and time lost, things like that, to get, get it back up to, up to speed. And we had just sent Phil Rostie to Atlanta for a training, and he had got training on how to investigate a DDoS attack. He got back, and sure enough, we had one, and he was actually able to identify a suspect based on his training. So, which, you know, I'll do jumping jacks all day long for, for the stuff that he's been doing and, and the support we've received from the city as far as our computer crimes, investigative abilities. But the technology continues to change, and we, we just have to stay up with it. So, especially in... Go ahead.
Oh, I got it.
Next slide. This is right from, and I apologize, it is very hard to read, those, those trend lines are, but if you'll focus just on the bottom, it's important to talk about salaries. And council has been extremely, extremely supportive, and the City, City Manager's Office in that regard. As you know, our, with your guys' support, our salaries, or our entry-level salaries were increased at the beginning of this year. It continues to always be a challenge, and so if we look at hiring more officers and more support staff, we have to be competitive. And so I just want to throw that out there and be transparent, that it's not just about hiring them, and it's about keeping them and not losing them. And so we have to stay competitive. And so, we have to stay competitive with that. Okay. Intelligence-led policing. Honestly, we've really already talked about it, okay? It is a business model. It's about changing the direction within an agency to focus on metrics. So in other words, the metric, once we roll out IOP, and to, just to let everyone know, we're rolling out IOP, whatever your decision may be, we are rolling out IOP. And an example of a metric is, in two thousand and twenty, we are going to focus on a twenty percent reduction in Part One offenses. So a twenty percent reduction in Part One offenses would be your assaults, your drug crimes, your burglary crimes, things like that, okay? The goal is, as a police agency, we don't just get stats and say, oh, okay, well, we saw a thirty percent increase in burglaries this month, we have to start affecting those stats. And that's under the intelligence-led policing model.
Is it basically making data-driven decisions about stuff? Is that what, is that the way that...
It's making data-driven...
Making decisions based on data?
Based on, based on data, based on crime trends, and then one other component with IOP, the intelligence-led policing portion, is also about gathering intelligence. So it actually parrots a little bit off of the US military's intelligence gathering model, lets... You should never clear a call without contributing to the intelligence of crime. So in other words, it's changing the, some of the focus of our police officers on scene. They, they're on scene for a burglary, they're on scene, maybe it's a traffic stop. Hey, what's going on in your neighborhood right now? Hey, do you know this person? It's all of those things that, it's all the data that's stuck in our, our officers' heads that they're probably doing, and it's pulling all of that data out, analyzing it, and then identifying who our top, top six percent offenders are, and then focusing on them.
Collecting dots and connecting dots.
That's exactly what it is. That's exactly what it is. And it's something that's, that's been happening, honestly, in agencies all across the United States, whether they call it intelligence-led policing or not, I don't know. But this is a, this is a model that Mesa County Sheriff's Office has adopted, and they've actually seen, within the last two years, about a thirty percent reduction in their criminal offenses. I was talking to a lieutenant of theirs on street crimes who said, you know, we're going to these houses constantly. We're not doing that as much anymore. We're not dealing with some of the offenders that we used to deal with.
Because they love talent.
Guess what? We are. We have incidents where we're dealing with those offenders.
Okay.
So, it's just a, it's just a matter of addressing it. So, it, it, it really is a business model, okay? It's bringing all that together, having very strong goals towards crime reduction, because when you reduce crime, you reduce the social harm in your community, because that's one, that's one of the things that's affecting our citizens. And if we can reduce that, that's what our jobs are as a police agency. It's not just getting the stats, it's reducing crime. So we can make Montrose a, a better place even than it is now to live in. And I talked about social harm, so it's not just about putting more officers on the street, okay? Actually, data has shown, if you hire thirty more police officers and just stick them on the street without a plan, they're gonna work. So, can we move to the slide of the future of public safety in our city?
So what Chief Hall is saying, and I think this speaks to your question, if we were to go out and, and arrest all these people, would we ever get results at that next level, at the prosecutorial level where we would actually see a difference? Well, this model basically narrows our focus, so much so that I really think that some of those ancillary cases that are bogging down the system could be reduced, because we're not necessarily employing a scatter approach. We're now narrowly focused on the six percent that create the thirty percent of our crimes in our city. So we create, we create very, very good cases on those six percent, and then we bring those forth. And I think with our work with the District Attorney's Office illustrating the importance of these six percent, that I think we can get some ground, I really do think we should.
And Dan's asked for it. Dan's asked for that communication, been very responsive.
Yep.
Now, obviously, what happens in the courtroom as far as when a DA asks for a high bond or an increased bond, you have, you have the defense bar, and you have a judge that will ultimately make that decision. And so, keep in mind, there's all those working components in place, but our goal is to disrupt. So, we're gonna do that by increasing, we want to do that by increasing our patrol team manpower. You might be surprised though as to how much we'd like to increase that, because it's actually very little. We certainly, as we talked about, want to increase our investigation support, to put more detectives back in investigations. Our school resource officers, we, we need, based on today's climate, we need more school resource officers, honestly. And in two thousand and eighteen, in the beginning of two thousand and eighteen, after the, the Parkland incident, we actually investigated nineteen separate threats against our schools over about a three and a half month timeframe, and we made nine arrests. We had probable cause to make nine arrests. So, it's an issue. We cer... So for the sake of time, let's go to the next page and we'll just get right into it. And for the one, for those of you that are following along on that, the next page is actually two pages, because the data was so small that we wanted to... All right, so this is what we are suggesting. We're suggesting an additional three more patrol officer positions, that's the blue suits responding to the calls, okay? That would give us a maximum number of six shifts, working ten-hour periods, with five patrol officers and a sergeant on each shift. That would accomplish our minimum staffing goals of four on at any given time, plus have some overlap, okay? We're asking for two additional school resource officers, so that our middle schools are covered full-time, our high schools covered full-time, and then we have an officer that can cover elementary schools and also Vista Charter School. We're asking to increase our detectives by three, we already talked about it. We're also asking for three street crimes-level positions. We were very successful last summer with our street crimes unit, and that truly is the point of the spear for IOP. That's your disruption unit right there, who are hundred percent proactive, moving towards those top six percenters. We're asking for one individual to supervise, because you're gonna need supervision, of school resource, crime-free, street crimes, and also for a traffic unit and park safety unit. So, traffic is a huge issue in our community, and right now, our on-duty staff are expected to enforce our traffic laws and also to investigate all of our traffic accidents. And so if we have a full-time traffic unit, not twenty-four hours a day, but across seven days a week, those individuals can take all of those traffic accidents and their investigation, and also step up our traffic enforcement, essentially pulling away more responsibility from our patrol division to be more proactive. Then you have detectives pulling away more felonies from our patrol division, and you have a street crimes unit that is also being proactive. You have a patrol division that then has more time to supplement and be even more proactive, all under that IOP approach.
When I hear the word traffic, I think of when there's a lot of cars backed up. When you say traffic, you mean tickets also for running red lights and for illegal turns and unsafeness, and traffic isn't just officers to monitor backed-up car traffic, but all those kinds of offenses.
Big trucks on Hillcrest, we get tons of complaints about that, but we don't have staff to go over and handle that.
Exactly.
The Vista San Juan type of stuff, where people are speeding through neighborhoods.
Right, that just is such a, currently, such a low priority, given everything else. I just wanna make it clear, I guess, just for clarification, for you guys, it's so obvious when you see traffic what you mean, and a lot of times the public just thinks traffic means a bunch of cars that are backed up.
Yep. This also would be an excellent way to patrol our parks, our Connect Trail, which we ended up getting graffitied again over the weekend. Potentially other infrastructure that will be built, hopefully soon in our parks. All of those things are things that this unit can accomplish. And then also, we have trained this unit up to have the investigatory knowledge to be able to handle our fatal traffic crashes like we had this last week. And so we don't have to rely on, not that we don't love State Patrol, but we'd like to be able to have the ability to investigate those again. So it all falls under a crime intel analyst, okay? We already talked about, that's that person that's running that data, that potentially is doing those intel interviews, that's supported with software, which we have already budgeted for this year and will be purchasing this year. And so all of that IOP stuff is directed by that crime intel officer, giving information to command staff and then sending down that information. There's your top six percent, this is what we need to do to focus on those individuals this week, this month. A public safety attorney, a very critical position to this whole thing. And we got this idea from Mesa County. Mesa County is currently working with a public safety attorney, and after street crimes goes in and basically takes down a drug house, whatever the case may be, you still have issues with tenants, you may have an issue with the landlord, they may not care that that is a drug house. That's where a public safety attorney comes in with abatements and with filing those types of things so that it further disrupts the individuals who are living there, so that they decide maybe that's not where they wanna be. We also potentially could help Dan's office with support from a public safety attorney role as a special prosecutor. So, that's where it comes in. You have your top six percent offenders, we could help the DA's office prosecute those individuals in that realm through Dan's office with a public safety attorney. Of course, a public safety attorney would help us with training and Fourth Amendment, Fifth Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, things like that as well, so it'd be a great resource there. But they would be very busy in that regard. And then, to Barbara's point, civilian report technicians, those are those individuals, trained individuals, taking the phone call requests, triaging them, they really need to go to a patrol officer, is it something that can be handled at that level? And of course, you can't increase all of these things with the more workload and not hire at least two more, we believe, records techs to process those cases. So down and dirty, that's, that's what we would be looking at, fourteen sworn positions and six civilian positions. So, moving through, personnel. A first-year police officer cost, costs us around a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to hire a police officer for first year's cost. Ongoing costs, right around, right around a hundred thousand dollars, and that's in salary maintenance, and then additional training, equipment, things like that. First-year sergeant, higher, obviously, because the pay is higher, one hundred and ninety-three thousand. Same cost as far as equipment, but ongoing costs with salaries, of course, that's higher. Crime analysts, we compared that essentially to a police officer position, the data shows they're paid approximately the same. And then a public safety attorney got those numbers from Stephen, it's about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars first year and ongoing.
Question.
Yes.
You have police officer including equipment, is that the car?
Yes, that includes the car.
Okay.
Yes, that does.
That's...
Correct.
Fifty-two thousand.
Everything. Does that include recruiting efforts, or are they not under the personnel costs?
No, it doesn't include really the recruiting efforts. It does include the training costs for the PTO, it does include the academy, if we have to send them to the academy, which is about ten thousand. It includes everything that you see as far as gear, it includes the mobile radio, the pack set, the computer in the car, the docking station, the firearms, and then it includes the training.
It's not the soft HR cost, but fruition for the academy.
Right, got it, that makes sense.
And personnel cost includes the benefit package, health insurance, what...
Yep, retirement.
Approximately forty percent.
Okay, moving forward, records technicians, as you can see, this is cost with benefits, about fifty-three thousand first year ongoing. So what does that all equate? For twenty positions between the six civilian and fourteen sworn, first year total cost is just over three million, ongoing annual cost, two million. This figure does not include salary maintenance, just wanna throw that out there, okay? It does not include ongoing salary maintenance costs, so that ongoing annual cost does not include that.
Salary maintenance being marked with adjustments based on inflation.
Okay, moving forward, let's talk about the building. Those are some of the pictures of currently where we're at, you guys have all been in there, so I'll move right to the current police building. Right now, this doesn't include like my office, the commander's office, our victim's advocate's office. We have a total of, and I got these figures from Mark Armstrong, six thousand eight hundred and seventy-four square feet. A thousand of that is actually the backup PSAP center, which was Wesco where they were at at one point. Records is about four hundred square feet, patrol briefing area is about five hundred square feet, and our detectives have about six hundred and fifty square feet in office space. We currently don't really have a conference room where we can currently meet, because that was taken up by records because of the PSAP.
Evidence, even in that building, evidence is over in the old room. Would it stay in the old room, or would it stay...
Doubtful, that's doubtful.
It's pretty cramped.
Yeah. We have eleven thousand pieces of evidence possibly, as we sit today, so it is pretty cramped, yeah.
And I hadn't thought about how big some of those pieces of evidence are.
Yeah, it's crazy. In fact, we have space out in Public Works as well, some walkers that were...
Things have changed in the last ten years as far as some of the legislation surrounding DNA, which has required us to keep evidence that may have DNA on it essentially forever. So if you have blood evidence, that is stored forever, you cannot get rid of it. And we do the best we can if we have a...
You can't store it in the cloud either, can you?
It's too wet up there.
You cannot. So for a new public safety building, some of the costs, and, and these costs were, were taken from, help me out Bill, fire.
When we did the architectural analysis, the space needs analysis, where we had input from all of our staff at the pavilion, Public Works facility, and the police facility, so we had that done several years ago. What was the name of the company, Chamberlain?
Chamberlain, yeah.
From Junction?
Yes.
So that, they came up with just rough estimates that we could give, a ballpark dollar amount. Of course, they'd be fine-tuned when you had a design-built contractor, contractor look at it.
So essentially, what we would be asking for is a three-story public safety complex. The first two stories would be filled immediately with personnel, the third floor, we would shell. And it wouldn't be finished, and we could finish it as we grew. It's just a best practice anymore, with Grand Junction PD kind of being one of the primary, I guess maybe lessons learned, for lack of a better word, they built a new building, and they, they're already running out of room. And they're looking at hiring another, I think it was forty-two, civilian and sworn.
They didn't think about the future, just what the need was today.
Just what the need was for today. And so it's just important to remember that, and because building costs are usually cheaper in the current versus ten years from now, it's good to at least have that structure surrounding whatever it is that you need to grow into. And with that open space, like I said, we could use that as, as training... And with that open space, like I said, we could use that as training. Although the first two floors, I think with that, that space needs analysis, did include a multi-use room where you could have mats roll out from walls and things like that. You could also use it as a conference room. Those are things we'd be looking at. So minimum costs, about $6,900,000. Maximum costs, $8,500,000. That does not include the parking area, secure parking, the things that are needed to secure the parking. Evidence processing and secure... One of the challenges is that we've had ever since I can remember is a place that we can bring large items out of the rain, like vehicles, to process for evidence. And right now, we just don't have that. And then secure it for, sorry Jim, long periods of time. Like Jim has graciously allowed us one of our bays. We had a vehicle in a fatal traffic accident that's been there. I think it's finally out, but...
It's got it out, but now the MRAP's there.
Yes. And so now Jim has graciously allowed us to store the MRAP there because the fire department needed their bay back for a new engine, so.
So does this, I'm trying to think of how to word this. Do we have enough land to put this facility on right now? Or do we have to acquire some property?
I think we do have enough land.
Okay, so these costs are just structured.
So the city, we've all planned ahead and back in 2012 maybe we bought the office building?
The co-building?
On South Second there. And then we purchased the Wells Fargo drive-through area there. And that way we were planning in advance for expanding the civic campus for the police station expansion.
So there's sufficient real estate to give you these bays and all the various things you're talking about?
No, I believe so.
Okay.
And some of those quote-unquote bays, you know, not everything is that brick-and-mortar police building. It's kind of like a public work structure. Some of that is a different fabrication. It's a metal building that may house, you know, secure indoor evidence processing, things like that. So it, and what short of it is, is we don't know yet because we don't know yet. But we have the land to put on.
And is that compatible with the kind of neighborhood district that we have right here? With offices, medical things, people living close by, that's all?
I think that...
It would increase the size of the civic campus. And the plan we've talked about in passing over the years has been going from the events plaza there to Cascade and maybe close that street off and create more of a plaza there to combine all of our civic campus buildings together. So they would flow and look really nice and provide a downtown plaza-type atmosphere. Not a lot of residential right in that area and so you wouldn't have any impact on that.
There's some pretty close. I mean, within a block or two, there's some ones. Okay, I just wanted to check that.
And I also think, you know, this also includes the $3,500,000 cost you see here is not entirely City Attorney's Office Municipal Court renovation for the old PD. That Municipal Court, City Attorney's Office renovation essentially would be connected to the new PD. So it'd provide more security for Municipal Court and the City Attorney's Office. Also, it would get Municipal Court out of here where it's, you know, share, it's co-sharing space with OBT. And it would probably be a better fit.
In the old building, in the existing building.
Okay. That's what I have for my presentation. It was not thirty minutes. It was an hour and thirty-one minutes, so anyway, just a tad over. Mayor said I had to...
Are you on my time?
Okay.
The rest of the agenda I'm sure can be put off.
Well, this is really important.
Yes, it's very important.
Yeah, that's my point.
And you covered it very well. Thanks for answering our questions.
Sure. And we're happy to answer any other questions that may come up later.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is clearly transparent. It's, everybody in the community needs to know this. We have our press here and if they have questions that we didn't think of, they get ahold of you and so that it's really clearly presented to the community.
We just want to go from reactive to proactive. That's really what it comes down to.
And I'd like to defer to David. Have you had some comments you wanted to make?
I think I pretty much said to council a week or two ago what was on our collective mind, I think. I would just, I guess, emphasize the fact that from the committee's standpoint and Dave stepped in here. But I think we realized early on what the problem was, what the need is. I think most of our discussion really centered on how do we effectively get from here to where we need to be? Which then resulted in the committee's recommendation as to how to approach it. You may have different ideas. But I think the one thing that we all agreed on was we have a problem.
Well, and you made a recommendation too about how to go about solving it, which, I mean, you put a lot of brain effort into that. And that was a great service to the city council.
Thank you.
So were you aware of these numbers for this potential costing, if you did it?
Which is part of the reason that, if you remember in the report, we did not suggest, and Dave and I probably disagreed a little bit on this. But one of the reasons why we didn't suggest a specific number in terms of the increase in the sales tax, the only point we made was it needs to be sufficient to cover these needs. And we took these numbers into consideration when we made that recommendation.
You know, the difficult part from my perspective is looking at the personnel cost versus the construction cost. So, you know, Chief Paul gave you a number. I went out and I asked Mrs. Wittenberg what our average retail sales, taxable retail sales were between 2010 and 2018. And I think that was somewhere on $442 million. So, you know, you could do the math and you could figure out what you would need just to look to cover personnel costs. You know, building costs is another thing. So there's a lot to consider from a council perspective and an admin perspective because, you know, you've got a levy coming up that the county wants to impose on us for our property taxes. So there's a lot to consider. And you want to kick around ideas about what pain threshold, if you will, that the public could endure. You know, mine might be 0.6, 0.7 percent increase in the sales tax. Somebody else might be able to incur a little bit more. But, you know, if you're looking at 442 million as a average over a nine-year period, half a percent is going to bring you in about $220 million. I'm sorry, $2,200,000. And you need slightly under that to cover the personnel cost.
Yeah, in reference to personnel cost too. If your decision is to move forward, we are not hiring 20 people in one year.
You can't, that's just physically...
You physically cannot do it. Having said that, if you'd asked me in January of this year, we'd have looked so good as far as where our hiring is right now. I would have told you, I wouldn't have thought we have done that or been where we're at today.
You've done a good job recruiting and hiring new officers, better than you might have expected.
Yep.
And those are the efforts of sending folks to the front range and whatnot. I mean, you can say specifically what you're doing that's resulted in that.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not just like we don't know what happened, but you know exactly why.
You know exactly what it is.
I think our marketing department has helped you.
Yep.
You've gone to these conferences.
Those videos.
Continue doing that, that's good practice.
Also, until the building is done, you can't hire these people, there's no place to put them.
Wow.
Yeah, so when it comes to detectives, yes, that's correct. Can we increase our patrol division? Can we put on street crimes, things like that? Yes. Because at the end of the day, even though it's a tight fit, we could eject an MDC from a computer and huddle around the table there in the briefing room and get reports done. We can do it that way, is it ideal? No. We can do it in, I guess, in a tight fit.
Because their car is their office until they come back to police headquarters where they do paperwork. And at that point, they're not all doing that at the same time, is what you're saying.
I might also add that there was, jumped in today, there was discussion at the committee level about that very topic. There was even discussion about, well, you're not going to hire them all in one year, so should you stagger this, et cetera? I think the consensus of the committee was you need to hire this many, hire them as soon as possible, realizing that you can't do it all in one year. But don't put any constraints on, oh, you can have three this year and four next year, that type of thing.
It's a little bit like telling them exactly how you want it, not just what you want.
Right.
ILP isn't, I look at it as an organism. And each piece relies on the other pieces to be successful. And so it's difficult to just put in place one piece, like a street crimes unit, without a crime intel person. Can you do it? Yeah, can you just throw a street crimes unit on the street? Yeah? Are you going to get the best results? Probably not.
And we haven't, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead. I was going to say we have an interesting trend in our hiring too. And this kind of speaks to the fact that we don't want to be hampered as far as limitations on what we can do traditionally. Or at least in the recent past, a lot of our hires have been people we had to send to the academy. So that slows down that ultimate officer being ready on the street situation. Very recently, we've had an uptick in post-certified officers who don't have to go to the academy, who can go through our training program and then start right away, who have some experience. So if we limit the amount of people that we can bring on, we get into a situation where we have to choose between one of those two. We just want to make sure that we're able to be flexible enough to make that right decision.
I like the way you've separated, and the committee helped here, that all the personnel costs, which are ongoing forever
Yeah.
versus the plant expenses. And I'm not a finance person, but Shani and the rest of the team, maybe we can look at financing the buildings and keep that separate from some form of taxation to have an ongoing perpetual financing of the new employees, the growth of the personnel. So it looks like two problems to kind of solve.
Well, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong Dave, is we came back with a recommendation of have one finance source. But again, I think that would be quite high. It's certainly up to you whether you want to break that out or not. But the committee felt, you know, without knowing what the true cost of the financing of a construction would be, we came back with the wording we did. So, you know, you guys could break it down. And if it's cheaper over the long run to self-finance or go through an opportunity zone type endeavor, great. You know, but we came back with, we weren't sure we wanted the city to take on additional debt over the long term. And that's why we said to have a structured tax source, one in perpetuity and one to be grandfathered after the payoff of the new building.
Is that accurate?
Do you have a best guess on how long it will take to hire all the positions? Knowing it's just...
Sure, no, we could, we, the way our current hiring trend is going, we could probably do it in two years, honestly. We could do it in about two years. We can, in any, within a four-month training period, our maximum capacity for training police officers is six to seven officers.
To reinforce what the chief said too, I think the committee felt like when we talk about ILP, and I am kind of repeating what you said, but I think it's important that it is a system and you need all pieces of the system to make it work properly. So you can't really say, well, we can get by without this position because it's more economical. It is part of the whole system that makes it all work.
Can you tell me more about the committee's discussions around consideration of property taxes? Because I'm just seeing one sentence where that was just not palatable to the voter.
We did discuss it. Did we fairly rapidly dismiss it? Yes. And I think that from a historical standpoint, first of all, Montrose has never imposed, to my knowledge, a property tax within the city. I think Montrose, besides Steamboat Springs, is probably the largest municipality in the state without a property tax. And I think that's something that the citizens of Montrose probably appreciate. And so to suddenly impose a type of taxation that's never been imposed on the public before, we kind of felt that that was chartering, that was uncharted waters and we weren't sure we wanted to make a suggestion.
I will say, in this morning's staff meeting, as mayor, I've asked Bill to talk to Brad Hughes, the county assessor, to get some kind of feel on what a property tax would look like. How much money would be generated or given about how much money we need? What would that look like so we have that piece of data?
Do you have all that in your inbox? I just sent it five minutes ago.
One other consideration in that regard that the committee, I think, and jump in here to a degree took into consideration is that I know that there is an argument for a sales tax always when you're, that, okay, well, it's not just the residents that are paying for it, it's being shared. But I think law enforcement, public safety is probably an area where non-residents and visitors share to probably a greater percentage in the benefit of that than other activities that they may be contributing to the payment of sales taxes on. Because everybody wants to come to a safe community, whether you live in the county or you live in Denver. And so those services are being provided to them on an ongoing basis. So I think it is a more fair discussion.
Yeah, I was going to angle that, you know. Anyone that comes to the city benefits from the services provided by the city. So everyone ought to pay their fair share, however small that might be. Anodally, you know, I worked in Denver for two and a half decades. You know, I had to pay $5 for the privilege of working in Denver. It was a head tax. So you want to work in Denver, it's going to cost you $5 a month. And then all the taxes that I had to pay for my lunches or whatever I spent down there. I see it as a balanced way of paying for the needs of the city. Does that answer your question, Barbara?
Yeah, it does, it does. And combined with the information from the assessor, I just, I appreciate the committee's recommendation and I give that a whole lot of weight. I just wanted a little more information about the property tax option.
Yeah, and it might be interesting, at least from my perspective, to see what Brad Hughes comes back with, you know?
Yeah, it's worth, thanks for asking for that because it's something to at least look at.
As I looked at the report, that was the only paragraph or section that wasn't thoroughly data-driven. And I thought to be consistent, let's have the data for everything if it's possible. And I figured that it was possible and thank you for taking care of that already. But yes, we have that piece of data.
And we probably, as a committee, dismissed it a little more easily than you can as the elected officials. To us, it was like, never happened before. We're looking at the percentage chance of passing something that's more likely we can get a sales tax passed. That was our fairly uninformed conclusion, not based, not really data-driven.
Another thing I'd like to see is what kind of revenue would you get from various percent increases in the hotel tax? The tax that visitors pay when they come here. You have a good point, that they all benefit from our community's safety and our police force. If something happens, if they have a wreck on our street, you know, our police serve them too.
I don't recall the numbers, but Bill talked about that a little bit. And the tax on hotels and stuff is so small, you would have to really increase it significantly to come anywhere near what we would have.
Maybe it would just be a contributing thing, not the whole amount.
And we did, as a committee, we discussed that. And one of the concerns we have, and I think I mentioned it when we presented this to the council a couple of weeks ago, is the fact that we thought psychologically, two tax questions to... is the fact that we thought psychologically, two tax questions to your constituents was confusing and maybe doesn't set well. And to focus on one avenue...
I think when we looked at that once before, what were we talking, like it was only $60, $70,000 a year.
If you, I don't remember that part, but I think we just, we talked about if you quadrupled it, because it's 0.8 now, so you quadrupled it.
0.9. 0.9. We only get $120,000 per 1% lodging tax. We're currently at 0.9. We'd have to increase it to like 25% to even come...
Okay. Well, that's what I wanted to know.
And you couldn't reasonably use 100% of that to go along with...
No, you couldn't. But just the numbers, just, even part of it isn't going to make a difference. Could we use that to offset our flight guarantee program? Possibly.
But like you said, then as soon as you have two tax questions on the ballot, it probably gets kind of ugly.
I'm just going to remind council for 30 seconds here at most, that we have some other issues to discuss. I don't know how long you want to be here, and I know that we will be discussing this issue numerous times before we come to our final conclusion. So if you think maybe you can write down your questions so we don't forget them.
With that in mind, mayor, may I be excused?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for coming and participating.
But will you talk about, what we have for deadlines? We have to make a decision by when? July 25th?
If we go in November.
Right. That's up to you.
But part of our discussion, I'm guessing, will be when do we go? And that will help define those parameters also.
We don't want to just keep kicking it down the road. We're going to miss a deadline.
And to end on the committee's final comment, and one of the final comments was, we ask council to do it as soon as legally possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for outstanding work. Okay, let's move to the First Amendment to commercial lease agreements.